We're going to start the meeting. Green Bush Central School District. A stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America into the Republic of course stands on issue with God indivisible. We will return justice for all.
All right, we appreciate everyone joining us out here today in Janae's auditorium and want to want to thank Janae for having us, Mr. Grignan and all of the students and staff. We're going to open up this meeting with with our student council representatives Cole Hardy and Natalie Crisando.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry Natalie couldn't make it tonight. I hope you're all having a great start to your week so far. As for student council, last week, a select group of active students had the opportunity to attend the annual leadership conference hosted this year by Niskiuna High School. We spent the day learning about initiatives other schools have implemented to improve school climate and student engagement. It was a very valuable experience and we're excited to bring fresh ideas back to Columbia. This Friday, we will be hosting our spring blood drive partnership with the Red Cross in the auditorium. As of today's meeting, we filled nearly all 59 appointment slots, but we're still working on scheduling the final few. Donating is a great way to give back and volunteers will also receive three hours of community service. The event will be student run throughout the day and we're looking forward to a successful turnout. Looking ahead, we have started brainstorming for our end of year event aiming for a pep rally style celebration that is inclusive and shifts away from the class on class competitions. We can't wait to finalize our plans and share more ideas with you guys. That's all for now. On behalf of student council, we hope you have a wonderful rest of your week. Have a great night.
Thank you.
If I can just say that is amazing of a turnout.
I know, we did a good job.
Okay, and next on the agenda is approval of the draft minutes. Everyone was in. Is there a motion to approve the draft minutes? Ms. O'Brien, the second Mr. Buno, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. Okay, and next is the board forum. I'm gonna start on my right, Ms. Steinbach.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Brien. All right, Ms. Turner.
Yep.
I'm all set, Mr. Mann.
Good for now.
All right, Mr. Buno.
Yes, I just want to give the committee an update on the superintendent search. The board interviewed six candidates as part of our first round of interviews. A very impressive group of individuals who had a lot of experience in a lot of different environments in terms of rural suburban urban educators. We decided after a lot of deliberation to bring back three candidates and those individuals being contacted to set up interviews for next week. And we hope to give another update in early April about our where we are with our progress. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buno, Mr. Comerston. All right, Ms. Manor, all set. All right, and and next on the agenda, we're going to move forward with our budget workshop presentation, Mr. Simons.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. I want to welcome everyone from the community who was here to participate in our Board of Education meeting. This is our second budget workshop. We are presenting information related to the proposed budget for next school year. This is an important session because we have met on March 12th. We saw a preliminary budget which is referred to as a rollover budget and we have made some adjustments to that budget because we were facing a significant budget gap, which means the difference between our expenditures and our revenues with our expenditures exceeding the revenues. Tonight, I'm going to have a quick recap of what we presented on March 12th in terms of a summary. Then I'm going to share with all of you and the board proposed changes which will include about 2.7 billion in expenditure reductions. We will also talk about proposed tax levy considerations. Under New York state law, public schools face a tax cap, which is a limit on the amount of money we can raise with a 50% vote. I'm going to be proposing some information on the tax levy that goes above that cap. And I'm going to explain the rationale as to why I am proposing that. And I hope that the community and the board will study that. Additionally, I'm going to be talking about fund balance and reserves. Fund balance is money that is set aside by the district when we are able to do that because our revenues came in higher than our expenditures. Reserves are legally authorized savings accounts that school districts can use to set aside money for specific purposes, including to appropriate those reserves towards particular expense categories. Additionally, each year or several years, we propose to the community to ask permission to use money that we have set aside in a bus purchase reserve for the purchase of replacement buses. We have a proposal this year to purchase 10 new buses, eight that are traditional buses and two EV buses that I'm going to talk about. We'll give the community a timeline. The board is not voting on the budget proposal tonight. The board is going to be studying the information. They need time to look at everything. They have discussions with me and with each other, but the board is not adopting the budget this evening. We're hoping that the board will see more information on April 8th. And on April 22nd, we're going to ask the board to adopt proposed budget to go out and vote in the community in May. So just a quick, at a glance, look at where we were at on March 12th and where we are now. The rollover budget on March 12th that was presented included everything that we have this year going into next year, including our estimate of expenses based on this year, didn't factor in retirements, didn't factor in any reductions in staff. And that budget was proposed at 118.6 million. You may recall that I said to the board that's an increase of 6.2%. That's too high. So our challenge between March 12th and today was to try to bring that budget down. I've often said that 80% of a school district's budget expenditures are associated with employee salaries and benefits because of a budget gap that we're facing primarily because of employee benefit increases. Some of those costs are beyond the control of the Board of Education and the district. And though the main driver of our expense increases into the budget next year are the health insurance plans and particularly our prescription drug benefit plan. It's going up remarkably and that is approximately 70% of the increase going into next year. So 70 cents of every dollar that increases the budget next year is associated with those employee expense expenses that are going up and they're outside the control of the Board of Education. So we revised the budget and we reduced the number of positions that we are proposing for next year by about 2.7 million dollars, which brings the budget down to 115.8. That's a 3.7% increase in the budget. That's a little more in line with the average increases that we've had in the budget over the course of the last several years. That's the budget increase. That's not the tax levy increase. The current year's budget is 111.7 million dollars. That's the 2425 budget. And the budget that we're looking at tonight and proposing proposes to spend, asks the community to spend 115.8 million. So going back to where we were on March 12th, starting at the bottom line and working up, our budget was proposed to be 118.6 million dollars. Of that 118.6 million dollars, our salaries were estimated to be about 57.9 million and our employee benefits 34.5. We're recommending reductions in salaries and benefits through the abolishment of positions. This is just a recommendation at this time, which will bring the salaries reduced about 1.4 million and our employee benefits come down about 1.1 million. Additionally, there's some other savings, about $300,000 and some adjustments to the budget related to BOSIs. Those adjustments include budgeting for the number of students that we currently have in the STEM High School program, our Tech Valley High School program, and an adjustment to the pre-K classes, which shifts two of the courses, two of the pre-K classes that we currently have in our schools to community-based sites should the board approve that. So all in all, we've reduced the expenditure side of the budget by 2.8 million dollars. That represents about a 4.1 million dollar increase and a percentage increase of about 3.7%. Keeping in mind again what I said earlier, about 2.9 million of that 4.1 million dollar increase is affiliated with employee benefits. The only way to reduce that cost right now is through the reduction of positions. We started the process of looking at how we can reduce expenses by looking first at areas that we could reduce without cutting staff positions. So we have offered to the community when we had monies available, including federal grant monies, a K-8 Elevate summer school program. This is a program that has been providing some summer activities for the students. The federal monies that had supported those programs over the course of the last few years are no longer being provided to the school district and the general fund budget would have to absorb 86,410. So my recommendation is unfortunately, we may not be able to run that. Additionally, there is a reserve, which is money that is set aside within the health insurance program. We participate in a consortium for health insurance with about 20 other school districts. All of those school districts are facing the same types of concerns regarding increases. There are two kinds of reserves there. There is the health insurance plan, which has a reserve and there is the prescription component which has a reserve. With some risk that future costs may go down, we are recommending to take 742,000 dollars out of the health insurance plan reserve, transferring it to cover some of our increases that we're anticipating in prescription drug costs. Doing that is a little bit risky, but we think it is necessary to save programs and to make sure that we can make our budget work for students. Additionally, I mentioned that we are proposing that two of our classes within the schools move to community-based providers. We've had some preliminary discussions with our groups that provide UPK. Would they be interested in accommodating that because they're charging what the state gives us in terms of UPK grant money, about 5,400 hours? And they said they were interested in it, but we haven't finalized that yet. STEM High School is a program that has been very successful, offered by Questar BOSIs to component school districts. It's a program that offers an opportunity for students to not only get their high school diploma, but also graduate with college credits. In fact, we've had students from East Green Bush graduate from that program not only with their high school diploma, but with their two-year college degree. So we want to maintain our participation in that program. We're not adding students to that in terms of the total amount. We budgeted for 22. It looks like we'll be able to put four additional students in there this year. So the number that will be there next year will be 22, same as it is this year. Our budget number had 26 in it because originally last year, 26 kids had applied to be in the program, but some decided not to attend. So we're not cutting it in terms of a program reduction. We're still offering the same number of kids that opportunity, but we're adjusting the budget down to about 55,000 dollars less to meet the number of students that are participating in that program. Legal fees, we reviewed our legal fees. We can reduce it about 30,000 dollars. Our cybersecurity insurance is going down, which is good. And we have a little bit of an increase for our election software that we run our election with. It has data regarding all of our resident voters. So the net reductions not associated with any teacher or support staff or non-instructional reductions is 1.1 million dollars. We are also proposing to recommend that we reduce some instructional positions. There is a report available to the public on our board agenda this evening or by request that shows the number of teachers, teaching assistants, non-instructional positions that we have in the district. In every category of employee, we've added almost 50 positions over the last five years. And there were reasons to do that. There were adjustments that we needed to make to provide services to students during a period of time in which public schools were impacted by the pandemic and COVID-19. And there's a chronology of some of that included in a cover memo. I encourage everyone to read it. So it wasn't as though we were adding staff at a time when we weren't cognizant of the financing. We needed to meet mandated services in areas to help the students bounce back from COVID-19. Areas such as academic intervention services, special education. We have more students who've moved into the district who received ENL services. So look at those categories and we see that the number of positions have gone up. We need to start the process of adjusting back based on enrollment in a way that closes the gap between our projected expenditures and revenue that we're getting. So these are the positions that we have reviewed thus far. We make, we are going to continue this review. We are anticipating that we may make changes. We're looking at areas such as business. We looked, we started by looking at areas where teachers were retiring. And whether or not we could reduce those positions next year, avoid laying people off and still offer the same courses and programs next year that we're offering this year. We believe with the exception of this business one, that in most of these areas, we can do that next year. We're going to have to be a little bit more efficient and deliberate about our scheduling. The business position may not likely stay on this list because we have students that need business math for their third credit of math, which is a graduation requirement. They have three years of math. And we have some students that are in a business pathway that they've already started and that they need to complete through some of our college arrangements to complete the business pathway through Sienna. So this will probably change. We're looking at some other areas of elective courses to see whether or not we can save the same amount of money and make adjustments to three areas through some part-time positions being either eliminated or adjusting some positions from full-time to part-time. And we're still looking at that. One reduction in math, point two in technology, that will likely happen at the middle school level. Five elementary positions. We looked at all of our elementary kindergarten registrations and we looked at our enrollment to date. And we are projecting later on the class sizes that would be impacted by that. There are many more sections that need to be reviewed as enrollment is changing. But all in all, we could reduce and stay within our class size guidelines by more than five. But at this point, we're recommending five. We have one music position. We had two people retire in music. We have one music position being recommended to be eliminated from the budget. That reduction will occur within the schedule of music at the elementary school level. And although the two teachers that are retiring are at the high school, those high school positions will be replaced and no music offerings that we're offering now will be cut next year. Said another way, all music programs that we're offering this year are going to be offered next year with one fewer teacher. Additionally, we are able to reduce special education, one school psychologist and three teaching assistants. We are replacing one of the two music teachers that retired and we are replacing a speech pathologist because those services have been reviewed by the PPS department and those are IEP mandated. Last year, when we presented the budget, we were able to eliminate a science teacher. But as students are moving up from the middle school into the high school and moving up in through their high school years, we have many more students this year that need earth science and our living environment. So we're going to add that science teacher back. So we're hiring a science teacher. So all in all, this represents a reduction of 1.29 million dollars in salaries and benefits. And again, to reiterate, all of these recommendations are still under review and are subject to change and adjustments. In the area of non-instructional positions, we had thought that we could eliminate a vacant position. In other words, nobody's in the position right now of a motor vehicle operator. However, we have an increased need because of the lunch program for increased food delivery. So we're going to combine that with the typical deliveries that the motor vehicle operator has done, equipment, supplies, mail throughout the district. And we're going to charge half of that position to the school lunch fund. So it is a savings of a half of the cost of that position, but it'll be a full-time position. We have a vacant custodial position currently. We haven't been able to fill it. We're not going to fill it and we're evaluating the schedule of afternoon and evening custodians to see if we can reduce that one custodial position and not fill it next year. No one's losing a job there. The typist position, Mr. Goodwin has agreed that he can survive without his clerical position, which has been open for quite some time right now. And I appreciate Mr. Goodwin being willing to do that. We're looking at the area of library typists. We have about 2.47 typists that assist librarians in the library. We're looking at whether or not we can reduce those and we're hoping that in some areas where people would be directly impacted as retirements are coming in this year to June, perhaps we can fill those, we can shift those people into other positions. So all in all, we have 1.1 million dollars recommendations for non-position reductions. We have one point, almost 1.3 million in instructional positions, which includes the teacher and teaching assistant positions. And the net expenditure reduction, which is reflected in the adjusted budget for March 26th, is the 2.7 million dollars. We're continuing to look at other ways that we could save money next year, but still provide services to the students. One of those areas is looking at our alternative learning programs to see if they can be delivered differently. They're very expensive. They've been very worth it in terms of helping our graduation rate. But the number of staff members dedicated to certain programs such as the CTAP program, the CAT program, the MAP program, the OG program, we want to look if we can deliver those programs a little bit differently by looking at where those programs are located and maybe take advantage of some consolidation. I've also reached out to other districts. We have had other students from other districts attend some of these programs on a tuition basis to see if anyone would be interested in in having their students participate in this program. And we charged the full cost of tuition for that. And I've reached out to all of the suburban council superintendents and the Questar superintendents because we're always looking for alternative programs within our region. So those are to be determined. So currently in the district, we have a total of 507.4 instructional positions. And again, that goes to the report that I referred to in terms of our staffing levels. So to give you some perspective, while no one likes to cut staff, including me, our proposal eliminates approximately 13.7 positions, writing back the science teacher. We're reducing 12.7 positions out of 507.4. The summary, we go from 95 K-5 teachers to 90. In six through 12 math, we go from 17.2 to 16.2. In business or other electives, we have three business positions. We go to two and a half or some other alternative. Technology, we go from three to 2.8. Music, we go from 15.5 to 14.5. Special ed, we go from 55 to 53. And psychologists, we go from 8.4 to 7.4 and teaching assistants, 112.5 to 109.5. Again, we are reducing staff, which is always difficult. But none of these staff reductions, with the exception of the business, which may be adjusted, are going to result in cuts in the actual programs. There is a distinction between a staff reduction and a program cut or a class cut. Based on our review currently, we can offer all of the same programs that we offer this year, next year, and make 12.7 reductions, which is approximately 2.5% of the instructional staff. On the non-instructional side, we have 261.77 employees. We are impacting through the reductions, the number of typists that we have. We go from 27 and a half to 24.03 and custodial workers go from 28 to 27. Again, we're still conducting a review. I'm not sure if all of this can be finalized until we actually take a deeper look, deeper look at some things. Elementary class sizes, this chart represents our average class sizes from kindergarten through fifth grade over the course of the last five years, going back from 2019, 2020. Based on the number of parents who have requested packets to register for kindergarten, our kindergarten enrollment is projected to have an average class size next year of 19.2. First grade, 18.7, second grade, 19.9, third grade, 19.8, fourth grade, 20.5 and fifth grade, 21.1. So when I work with other districts and I share information regarding class sizes, our class sizes at the elementary school are equal or lower than most school districts that I talk to. Again, nobody likes to reduce staff and everybody appreciates all the work that the teachers are doing. But these reductions are necessary to close the gap. Average class sizes at Gulf Middle School next year. Recall that we added about 2.7 teacher positions to implement full teaming in grade six, in grade seven. Teaming is a concept that is research-based that allows middle school teachers to work with the same group of kids to develop better relationships with the kids, to support student engagement, to make sure that students feel connected to the school and it's a school within a school concept. It's something that the board and I talked about doing in order to make sure that the middle school was getting the support that it needed. Middle school age is a very challenging time for students, not only academically, but socially emotionally. Increases in mental health concerns tend to appear as students are entering middle school. We've created a supportive environment and these are the class sizes that we offer at the middle school next year. All of these class size projections are with the reductions included. Additionally, at the high school level, putting a high school schedule together is a lot more complicated than the elementary school and the middle school. So there's some variables that have to be considered. We took out some of these, some of the data regarding our alternative classes. So we keep our classes for students that have support needs smaller. We provide them with a smaller classroom setting and more support. We've taken those out of these numbers, but we've included all other courses, including AP and college credit courses. So some of our AP courses and our college credit courses are also smaller and they're factored into these averages. These numbers can change. Student requests for certain courses change. Kids move into the district, kids move out of the district. But right now, given the data that we have and the mock schedule that we have reviewed, these are the average class sizes ranging from math at 22, science at 20, 23 in English, 26 in social studies, 23 in world language, 19 in R and 30 in phys ed. We did not include business because we're still looking at that. So there was a question that was asked at the board meeting on March 12th. What do our, what do we look like in terms of this year? What positions were reduced when we were developing the budget last year into this year? Originally, when the budget was passed, we recommended reducing a science, a foreign language, three early intervention specialists. Two of those people moved into classroom positions that were available. Two reading teachers, one elementary teacher, two and a half teaching assistants and one custodial worker. So last year at this time, we proposed 755,000 dollars in expenditure reductions. We weren't able to do all of that and this is kind of verification that things can change. We looked at our class sizes in elementary schools last year and we decided that we couldn't reduce that one elementary teacher. So we have 95 this year. We had 95 the year before. We're looking to go to 90 next year. We weren't able to reduce the two reading teachers that we had proposed here. We met with the English department and they really made a strong case and showed the data that they needed extra support for students who needed AIS services and were pushing into the classroom. So we added one of the two reading positions back. Additionally, we kept a typist position open at Columbia High School in one of the assistant principal's office, but the cost of subbing that position was about the same as it would have been in not hiring it. So we had to adjust the current year's budget, what we were planning to do with reductions, to a 661,465 reduction. So we didn't cut as much this year as we had proposed last year at budget time. Taking a look at the tax levy, we have shared this graph before. Our board has been very Our board has been very cognizant during years prior of the impact of the school budget on the tax levy. The green graph represents the New York State tax cap. The blue graph represents the tax levy that the board approved within the budget and that the community approved. From the period of 2021 through the current year, the average tax levy in East Greenbush has been very low. There were reasons why the board chose to do that. We had federal money coming into the district to provide programs and services. We received larger foundation aid increases over those years. The board was sensitive to the inflationary costs that were impacting residents. At the same time, we were adding staff to help the district and the students bounce back from the pandemic. Our results are some of the best in the region on state test scores and on our early reading, math and literacy scores. So the board made an investment in services for students and was sensitive to the taxpayers during this period of time. This in combination, however, with the prescription drug and health insurance increases, remember 70% of this increase is in employee benefits, has created a circumstance in which our expenditures projected for next year with a level of reserves and fund balance we are appropriating towards next year budget presents a $6.5 million budget cap. So the board made a determination to maintain these services for the students and it foregoad recurring revenues during this period. So I am recommending budget scenarios this evening that go up to the tax cap or exceed the tax cap by 2% in combination with expenditure reductions. As part of looking at tax levy increases, in years past, we present data on our tax levy as compared to other school districts. East Greenbush's proposed tax levies averaged over the last five years is the lowest among comparable suburban council districts at 0.51% on average. See other districts in the mid twos and in the high ones. Additionally, when we look at our enrollments compared to other districts, in comparison to our district's budget, our cost per pupil, how much we spend per student is in line with comparable districts. So our difficulties with the budget that we face this year, isn't that we're spending more per pupil, it's that we need, in order to maintain our financial position in the district, we need to do a combination of things. We need to cut expenditures, we need to raise taxes and we need to be very cautious and prudent about the level of fund balance and reserves that we appropriate because you can run out of money in a hurry. So the budget scenarios that I'm presenting, there are four for the board's consideration. It's a framework to think about the budget as we progress toward April 8th and April 22nd. The first scenario reduces the full $2.7 million and asks the community to support a tax levy increase at 3.19%. The second scenario maintains the reductions of $2.7 million and proposes a 5.19% tax levy increase, which is 2% above the cap. The third scenario budgets with fewer cuts, about $1.9 million in cuts, so it's about $800,000 less, $1,000 less in cuts, but raises the tax levy up to the cap. And then a budget with fewer cuts with 2% above the cap at the 5.19. So these are the scenarios. If you take a look across the top of this slide, both scenario one and scenario three maintain the tax levy at the current tax cap for next year at 3.19%. One of them has a lower budget at 115.8 million because we're maintaining all of the proposed cuts. Scenario three has a higher budget at 116.5 because we're not making all of the reductions and we still have a gap of 1.935. That gap would need to be filled by further reductions in expenditures, more cuts or more use of fund balance. Currently, both of these budgets, remember I said that reserves, our monies have been set aside? Proposed to use $8 million of fund balance and reserves to close the gap between projected expenditures and revenues, to close the structural deficit that we've been projecting. The scenarios at the bottom, budgets two and four, include both budgets raising the tax levy 2% above the cap at 5.19%. Scenario two maintains the $2.7 million of reductions and balances the budget, closing the gap with an appropriation of fund balance and reserves of 8 million. In my opinion, this scenario two is the most fiscally responsible budget. Even though we're going up 5.19%, it would maintain all of the $2.7 million in reductions. I lost my slide. We'll go over here. Scenario four, again raises the tax levy above the cap, reduces expenditures by less. There's $1.9 million worth of reductions. It's about $700,000, $800,000 less in cuts. $757,000 would be need, need to be made up in either an increase in appropriation of reserves or further cuts. So in my view, there are two out of the three things in scenario two that people don't like. They don't like increasing taxes and they don't like expenditure reductions. But keeping in mind, we're trying to close a $6.5 million gap between projected expenditures and revenues for next year. So scenario number two, I think presents the greatest opportunity to begin the shift out of the structural deficit that we have been talking about. Additionally, we have to monitor and be careful about appropriating reserves. And I've used the analogy in the past of using your savings account to pay increasing monthly bills until you go to the savings account and you find out that the bills have gone up, but there's no more money left in your savings account. Then what do you do? Then you have to cut deeper or you have to spike the taxes. So if you look at this graph in 2024, 25, the bottom line represents the total amount that we currently have in reserves, projected to have in reserves by the end of the year, 24,84,967. So our reserve position for the end of this year is scheduled to decrease by $2.216 million, projecting into next year, assuming the $2.7 million of expenditure reductions and assuming the 2% above the tax cap, our reserve position would decline to 24 million. That includes utilization of our EBLR reserve, which is a reserve for post-retirement benefits. Our ERS reserve is for employee retirement system contributions. Our TRS reserve is for teacher retirement system. We will be utilizing those reserves next year, representing a total decrease, including with the assigned fund balance of $4.6 million. Projecting into next year, based on the level of money available in the reserves and the cost associated with the expenses that we can use, we can charge to pay out of those reserves. The reserve position declines to a loss of $8.5 million. And then you see by 2027, 2028, we run out of money and we have, we have $2 million to make up within our reserves.
Mr. Simon, a quick question. So in 2026, 2027, I'm seeing a $4 million jump and that follows in 27 and 28, whereas it was $2 million before. And I'm just wondering the primary driver that's anticipated for that.
Jennifer?
So the primary drivers, there's certain assumptions that rolled into what kind of increases we're going to have year over year. One of the factors is that once you have increases, they compound over time. So the primary drivers are salaries. So we obviously made some reductions going into 25, 26. So our salary increase was not as high as we anticipated in our rollover budget. So for example, we assumed about a 4.5% increase in salaries. Those reductions brought that salary increase down to 1.92%. But that's because of certain reductions that were made. So looking forward into 26, 27 and 27, 28, we don't know if there's going to be certain adjustments yet. So we're assuming the same level of positions that we're in 26, 27 with a 4.5% increase in salaries. Then looking at salary, looking at the benefit side, another primary driver. This year, our employee benefit increases were about 9.5%. We assumed that was the net increase because some other benefits did not increase at the same rate as our health insurance increases. So our health insurance increase combined with our RX increase was substantial. We assumed those same increases going into 26, 27 and 27, 28 because Mr. Simons was talking about our reserves on our prescription drugs. We lowered that premium increase from a 32% increase down to a 20% increase. That means the RX plan will have an operating deficit next year of about $1.1 million. So we're going to anticipate that the RX premium increases will continue at rates of at least 20% or higher in the next few years. In addition, on the medical side of the health insurance, that's about an annual increase of about 9% in those projections. Those are the primary drivers. Everything else is small in relation to the whole, but then they compound over time. So those were the assumptions that led into that. Now, part of this also is the revenue picture because this is the combination of your revenues and expenditures projecting out into future years.
I'm wondering from a broad picture, so thinking about FTEs, thinking about the proposed cuts, we're saying that 10 cuts is about 2.2 million. I heard the health insurance pick apart. I'm just wondering, like, could you just like, like just briefly, just like a $4 million increase? So like, and I'm just, I'm just literally just trying to get a broad picture, just like of, you know, how many FTEs are we saying in that assumption? What percentage of it is benefits and how did it, you know?
I would have to break down that analysis a little bit further.
Okay.
We're saying that the, that in 26 and 27 and 27, 28, these monies are based on assuming the same number of staff positions, right? They do not factor in any future reductions. You are likely to have to make future reductions in those three years. But we don't know what that number is yet. So we have to assume the same number of positions. We apply an average increase of salaries, average increase of benefits. The other thing that is factored into this is, you know, that Jennifer made some recommendations to invest some of our monies and she has factored in already to the reserve position the investment earnings. So, and again, that's prospective and therefore it is, it is a projection, not necessarily.
What I want to, what I'm wondering now is then if the, because if, if the recommendation is a 10 cut now, are we then adding that back in, in the subsequent year?
No. It's taking you to a new baseline. Taking you a new baseline of the salaries.
All right.
Shell? Yeah, if you can hold, I, I want to get into some of the other propositions. Thank you. So this is a very important variable. Can't run out of money in your savings account to pay your regular operating expenses. As a general rule, you want to try to avoid funding recurring expenses with one-shot revenues. And when the money is used from reserves to fund increasing expenses, eventually you get to a point where you have to make further cuts. So shifting from the budget that we're proposing for next year to other propositions that the community and the board would be asked to consider is we have been setting aside money over the years in a reserve that was approved by the voters to pay for replacement buses. We operate a transportation fleet of about 102 buses. The average lifespan on a bus is 12 years. Our replacement plan generally scheduled to replace eight buses per year. This year, we're going to have a proposition to purchase eight diesel or gas fuel buses. We also have talked about EV buses and although we are, as all school districts are doing, are concerned about that mandate and the timeline that is currently in law that by 2027, we have to have, we can no longer purchase diesel or fuel buses. So we want to start the process of buying a couple of those along with the charging. So we're authorizing in a separate resolution, the board approves and supports this through the voters, purchase of two EV buses. And the last reserve that we're currently using was established with a $5 million amount. And that's the total amount that you were allowed in law as approved by the voters to put into the reserve. We need, we need to close that reserve and talk about establishing another reserve and we're recommending a $10 million threshold. We may not be able to put that money in because of the financial picture of the district, but we save the taxpayers money in principal and interest by setting monies aside in the reserve and not having to borrow those monies. And it's been something that actually our bus proposition reserves have passed higher than our budgets in most years because the, the community understands the need for the buses and the affordability and that we're saving the taxpayers by not having to borrow money to pay for buses. So the proposal this year, first proposition will be eight buses, 466 passenger buses, 228 passenger buses and 221 passenger wheelchair buses. The total cost is $1.2 million. Now, last Friday, we were informed by Leonard Bus that we should estimate our cost of the buses and add a 12% factor in light of concerns about the tariffs. Right before this meeting, we got a call from Leonard Bus that said that New York State OGS is going to not, is going to put something in place where we won't have to pay those. So it's kind of a fluid thing, but in order to be conservative, we built in a 12% increase in these estimated costs. The board would be approving us to spend up to that amount of money. The community would be authorizing us to spend up to that amount of money, but obviously if the cost of the buses does not include that 12%, we wouldn't be spending it. We factored it into the plan. Why are we replacing buses? We have buses that are older. Remember I said the average life of a bus was 12 years? We try to replace eight to 10 a year. These buses have high mileage ranging from 117,000 miles, 112,000 miles to 141,000 miles. We have a bus fleet replacement schedule that we follow. So this is planned out in advance. And these are the current mileages on the buses. The EV proposition would propose to buy two buses at a cost of $530,818 for a total of $1,601. The charger will cost approximately, charges will cost approximately $1.1 million. New York State has a bus incentive program, which we are eligible for to apply a rebate towards the cost of those buses in the amount of $441,000. That would bring the total cost of the buses down to $695,632. And New York State has changed this funding in a way that we will get transportation aid. Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong. We will get transportation aid on the cost of the bus prior to applying the credit. So that's money coming back into the district that is reimbursed approximately 67 or 68% of all of the money that we spend on buses through transportation aid. When we get that money back, we put it right back in the reserve to fund the purchase of future buses. So money goes out to spend on the buses and money comes back in from the state in terms of reimbursement. Our plan for use of the new reserve is to complete the process that has been in place with the existing reserve. So in 24, 25, we will be purchasing eight buses with a beginning balance in the reserve of $2 million. Revenue coming in is five hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars in reimbursement. Purchases going out, so the year end balance at the end of this year will be a million six. Moving forward, we are projecting to buy eight buses next year at a cost of one point six million. Revenue is coming in five hundred and fifty seven thousand. Purchases of new buses at one point two, year end balance at nine hundred and forty one thousand. The EV buses, beginning of the year balance be nine forty one, four ninety seven. Purchases of six ninety five, bringing the reserve down to two forty five. And then twenty five, twenty six, proposed by six buses, beginning year balance in the reserve, two hundred and forty five thousand, revenues of five hundred and sixty two thousand and purchases of seven eighty. So at the end of this, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five to twenty six, twenty seven, the amount of balance in the reserve would be twenty two thousand, one sixty seven. So we don't know whether or not we're going to be able to fund the gross purchase reserve at the level that we've had in the past. But we want to ask the community to continue this mechanism that we've been utilizing to purchase new buses, which saves the taxpayers money. Again, as I began the presentation, I thank everybody for their patience. I was trying to do thirty slides in thirty minutes. I didn't quite make it. Mr. Grignan was supposed to be my timekeeper, but I guess I didn't even look. Probably held up his card several times. We have another budget session on April eighth. The board statutorily needs to adopt the budget by April twenty second. Board candidates who are interested in running for the board need to turn in their petitions by April twenty first. And we'll have a public hearing on May sixth. And at that meeting, we will present the budget in the context of the excellence in our students, in our staff, in our community in terms of the spending plan that is eventually agreed to by the board and how it will support continued student success in East Green Bush. I thank everybody for listening. I'll take any questions that the board may have. Sure, I'm going to sit down.
This one may be silly, so forgive me if I'm not following it. But when we look at the reserves, we say we're going to use eight million dollars with the reserves, but on the schedule, it doesn't pay a million dollars. It says four point six. So where am I missing?
Yeah. So budget is different than actual results. Revenues, we conservatively project and expenditures, we conservatively project. When it comes to actual results, we're like right now, I'm projecting what we're going to spend and what revenues are going to come in. And that results in our year end either a surplus or a deficit for twenty four, twenty five. So this year, we had appropriated about seven million dollars in fund balance, right? We're actually only going to use, Jeff, can you go back to, Mr. Simons, can you go back to that reserve slide?
On twenty one.
Up there. So when it, when it comes down to our year end results, we'll be utilizing in twenty four, twenty five, two point two million dollars. And that's a combination of these operating reserves and our assigned and unassigned fund balance. So we're, we're not spending that full seven million dollars. And that seven million dollars is basically bridging between the actual revenues that we're expecting to come in and what our spending plan is. So hopefully, we're not spending all the way up to our budget. And hopefully, we're receiving a little bit more revenue than we originally estimated. So the differences between those things cause the difference in, in these results. So this is projecting actual year end results. So then when we push forward into twenty five, twenty six, considering the reductions, where the baseline is our twenty four, twenty five actual results of revenues and expenditures. So, you know, obviously, there's still a bridge there. So because we have additional plans to appropriate the ERS reserve, the TRS reserve you see on the assigned fund balance line in twenty five, twenty six, there is actually a reduction of the unaside, the assigned fund balance area that's being spent. That's because it's shifting into the reserve. So really, the focus is on this total decrease. It's just a matter of which bucket we're assigning the year end results to. So there's a difference between, you know, what how, what we do for the budget, which is our spending plan, less the revenues that we're going to take in. And the difference between that has been held by for a planned use, utilization of fund balance. Now that planned utilization of fund balance may or may not come to fruition and it hasn't in the past. Now, now it is.
So said another way, I, you know, the eight million startles a lot of people.
Yes.
That's not necessarily what we imagine it to be.
So that's actually using four point six million of that eight million dollars.
It's just hard to
It is, it's complicated.
Understand that as a public because I'm looking at it and thinking, I have, we have eight million. We don't want to keep using eight million of our savings. But in reality, it's not great, but it's four point seven.
Because these are basically the buckets of funds that there's more flexibility in terms of the board being able to authorize appropriation on.
Yeah, well, think about last year. We had, at the end of the year, what was our number? Over six million dollars. And we shifted several million dollars for almost three million dollars into reserve.
Yes, it was over two million for sure.
Yeah, to keep it at the four percent level.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So that's really what we're looking at is that differential. If it's not going to be at the level we want to be, then we're going to have compounding issues of
And, and
eating into that number more and more and more.
Yep.
I think the difference there is last year, which was helpful to us, Mike, was that we had, we were able to put money, more money into the reserve because our fund balance position was much higher. That surplus was driven by building aid. Previous capital projects is no longer there. So now the fund balance that's available at the end of the year will not include that excess revenue. So now we have expenses that projected to exceed the revenues of this current year by about two point two one six million dollars.
Right.
So in that graph shows that our expenses are more limited.
Right.
Our projected revenues are now exceeding our projected. So we did have that building aid and down the road, we will have building aid.
And that's, and that's not
And that is factored in. So basically, we
When, when would it start?
So we have a tax neutral capital project. So the building aid revenues will be balanced out with the debt service reserve plan or the debt service payment plan. So in essence, if one goes up, the other goes, you know, it's, it's going to like have a neutral impact on the budget.
So I just the question, like, what made you choose these particular reserves to? No, EBLR is way, I mean, versus cost versus the liability, I got it.
Yeah.
But it's way higher than every, I mean, it's high.
I'm sorry, oh, the EBLR, the EBLR.
And then the TRS, the ERS reserves, I mean, again, they're more expense driven. The other ones are not. They were typically absorbed in certain fund, right? So why do we not do EBLR? We'll be stacking money in there for a long time.
So EBLR, we can use to the extent of our expenses. Right now, the budget includes the four oh three B non elective payments of about three hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to appropriate those expenses. Now, there are other retirement payments for, towards the EBLR reserve, yes. There are other retirement payroll, um, payments that are through payroll. So one of the things that I'm going to be looking at the end of this fiscal year, rather than having those incentive payments close out to the assigned unassigned fund balance category is I'm going to be recommending an additional appropriation of the EBLR reserve, which helps. This does not assume those because I don't know what that would be yet. Because we do not have all the retirements in at this point in time. But any additional spending related to that, we want to apply it to the EBLR reserve. So we want to basically create a mechanism where any related retirement incentive payments are being funded solely out of the EBLR reserve. The EBLR reserve is not established at the full liability amount. At this point in time, the full liability amount is over six million dollars.
It's never been.
I'm sorry?
Never been.
It's right, it's never been. But I'm just like, in terms of spending it right now, we wouldn't have a replenishment plan. But we haven't been spending that. So the twenty four, twenty five budget was the first year that we had put at least the non elective in terms of how the budget always had that non elective line in it. So now that is being funded through the reserve. And then any additional payments will probably put a resolution up for recommend, a proposed resolution to whatever estimated retirement incentive payments are is to appropriate that reserve up to that estimated amount as we close out the fiscal year. And that would become part of our annual process. There are not additional appropriations of that EBLR reserve right now because there's not retirement incentives actually built into the budget in terms of the actual salary budget. The salary budget includes positions, hourly work, overtime, et cetera. So that fund was chosen. You'll see that the appropriation of that reflects a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars, not three hundred thousand. And that's because there's estimated earnings on that that has a larger balance. So it's going to earn more than some of the other ones. So that's the net reserve, utilization of that reserve. Okay? All of these are net investment earnings, which is why in twenty four, twenty five, there's only utilization of twenty six thousand dollars there. Because there's a lot of earnings that are coming in against that two hundred and eighty thousand dollar appropriation that's built in there. Okay? So then going down to ERS and TRS reserve, so eight million dollars is a lot to appropriate in this situation. It's not, you know, it's, I guess we're looking at it reluctantly, you know? Because when you look at this picture here, you need a lot of years to be able to make these adjustments through expenditure reductions, combination of, you know, potential additional revenues, that kind of thing. So for ERS and TRS, it's basically how, how could we fill this eight million dollar remaining gap between our estimated revenues and our estimated expenditures? So it's basically trying to fill it in because in our assigned fund balance, the reason that in twenty four, twenty five, it's going to go down by two point two million. So you will notice on our budget summary chart that we are reducing the appropriate fund balance from six point six million down to four point one nine three million because that two point two million is being used. So we're basically appropriating everything else that's left. Okay, in terms of the budget picture. Go, and then basically, there was three, four point four million still to address. And we did have money in ERS and TRS. We are funding three point four million dollars of approximately, it's almost fifty four percent of our total TRS and ERS annual expenditures. It's not an ideal situation to be appropriating reoccurring expenses with, with the savings account. But it's trying to identify, well, where do we have some funds right now that we can use? And we're going to have to incrementally look at adjustments year over year to be able to adjust down that eight point six million dollars come twenty six, twenty seven. Because you can see that going into twenty six, twenty seven, there's a reduction in the appropriation of that ERS and TRS reserve because it's no longer going to be available or be very limited come twenty seven, twenty eight. So it's basically that we're appropriating whatever we can to fill that eight million dollar gap. Ideally, additional revenues, potential reductions in additional expenditures would help make that eight million dollar situation look better, which would improve those out years in an ideal world.
That was the workers' comp and unemployment, the same situation, too. You know, you didn't touch them.
I, I didn't. I didn't. So we can look at this as one, kind of, we can be flexible with those things. Our workers' comp expenditures have been pretty steady. You know, we have, we haven't had huge fluctuations, but we could be one claim away, you know, from an issue. And that was, I guess, my justification of not touching that.
They're very small.
I'm sorry? Yeah, they're also smaller. There, there's not a lot of opportunity there. But we're one claim away, but yet we're going to be spending fifty four percent of our retirement contribution expenditures are going to be supported by previous savings that have accumulated.
Now, what about tax surcharge reserves?
So tax surcharge, so those are evaluated. So that is not in this picture. So I mean, that is something I'd have to look up the reserve rules on that. For example, like in EBLR, you're not able to redesignate that a five million dollar balance unless it's in excess. If it's overfunded, overfunded your liability level and our liability level is still above this amount. So you're not flexible in terms of being able to shift that to another reserve category to help improve the situation.
And that's an important consideration because when we are asked to move things into reserves with fund balance, the issue becomes you can't reverse that process in some cases.
In some cases, correct.
Depending on the rules of reserve. So that's why I was very cautious last year about moving so much money into reserves. That's all. And I think that we have to look at every type of reserve that we have because the tax surcharge piece, you know, experience is much different. So I think we have to look at that.
Yes.
I think that picture on the other ones that we may need to keep and is offset because I don't think we can, it's not sustainable, obviously. So, you know, this year, depending on the scenario that the board goes with, we're talking about some serious cost containment measures, right? And making sure that we utilize, like, I just would have to know, what's the philosophy of people about using reserves? Because reserves are there for
rainy days.
And it's storming then.
Yes.
I think, I think eight million dollars has reached a comfort level for me that I really don't recommend exceeding.
So yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that. I just want to see a shift if we can to other sources, if possible.
So looking at the tax surcharge, you know, just looking at, actually, I was looking at that today in terms of the experience of utilization, hasn't been very high. Typically, we adjust our tax surcharge liability to our exposure on claims at the end of the year. Basically adjusted year over year depending on, you know, what the exposure is out there. We have had settlements, you know, some years there could be, it could be very small. Other years, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's something to look at. I do need to review the rules on the tax surcharge reserve to see if there is flexibility on that. Like the EBLR reserve, there may not, there is not flexibility, you know, to utilize that for other purposes. So that is something I need to look at. It is a bucket that I've recognized that. But again, you know, it's like looking at the risk. What if, what if there's a, a challenge that, you know, actually does come to fruition? And that's what those monies are set aside to help with that. So you're not eating into other normal budgetary situations. Now, there was a local district that had a big issue with a tax surcharge and they actually had to finance it. You know, so, you know, so there are things out there that it's, it's a managing risk.
Just so the board is aware, the community, we are aware that the town of East Green Bush has, is doing a reeval reassessment. And a tax surcharge reserve is money that is able to be set aside by the school district. In the event that someone challenges their tax assessment and is successful at getting their assessment lower, we have money to be able to cover our loss. So that's what we're talking about right now in terms of whether or not we could begin to think about utilizing that reserve differently to help us in the next few years. But we're entering into a situation where we there's a level of uncertainty as to how the the district's budget, town budget, county budget will impact East Green Bush in light of the reeval of the team. And we're actually reaching out next week and talking with supervisor Congress to get more money, more information.
You can have money, but how?
More money, I don't think they're going to give us any money. So I think on a regular basis, you know, Jennifer has, since she's been here, committed to reviewing these reserves and is honestly worried about, as I am, the eight million dollars appropriation of reserves at this point. And I think the conversation And I think the conversation that the board has to have regarding direction to me, me now and April uh, eighth is going to take a look at the budget scenarios. They're not boxed in stone. Again, it gives you the parameters of the level of cuts, the tax levy increases and the appropriation of reserves and the overall budget. What would you like to see us continue to look at? And, uh, what's your comfort level with, uh, going above the tax cap? And what's your comfort level regarding the appropriation of eight million dollars? And what's your comfort level with the scope of the cuts? From a pure financial perspective, I'm an educator and superintendent. I think superintendents are educators, but from a pure financial standpoint, you can anticipate that you're going to need to cut next year and the following year as well. And you probably should cut more now. Uh, but again, the cuts that we, where we approached it was we can preserve all programs next year. Let's appropriate the fund balance and let's see how things go. So it's a tempered approach.
I'm going to appreciate.
I don't, I don't think reducing the cuts is a good idea for the district's fiscal position or the educational sovereignty of the district going forward. I don't, in other words, I don't think, you know, lowering the cuts scenario free, uh, particular and going to the cap is fiscal responsible.
They have a couple of questions too. So I appreciate the fact that you looked through attrition and reductions and tried to minimize impact on program. I think that's critical for our students and families. Um, I don't know if I can, I mean, five, over five percent is probably the highest tax levy is probably in the long. So it's a little bit of sticker shock. What is one percent of the tax levy management?
Uh, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
I know we're having to do to close that gap. It just, I don't, I consequence is really of a sixty percent super majority, majority of this percent or more. And then if that doesn't pass, then we're back to drawing board. So we need to have other options as well. And we also need to start thinking, what happens if it doesn't go down again, right? We don't want to go there. So.
We're going to comment on that mic for just a minute because I think those are really good points that everybody needs to understand. Get two bites at the apple as a school board to go out to the budget, get your budget passed. Okay. There's another date that's set by state law. I think it might be June twelfth. I'm not sure. If you propose a budget that goes above the tax cap and it gets a fifty two percent vote, it doesn't pass. You got to get a sixty percent vote. So you could do that. You could come back and adjust the budget down to the tax cap. You can make adjustments to your expenses. You can do other things, have it be at the cap or lower than the cap. You could adjust the cuts. Uh, you could put more reserves in. Wouldn't do that, but could. So in thinking about this, and I don't want anybody to feel pressured to answer this tonight, but I've been thinking about this scenario quite a bit. You could propose a budget that goes above the tax cap. We go out, we make our case as we did with the capital project. Go to the community and we say, we've really been sensitive to the tax levy increases over the years. We show them the graph. We said your average tax levy increase has been very small over the course of the last few years. In fact, if you look at your tax bills, in some cases, when the board raised the tax levy, your tax rates actually went down and your bills went down. In some cases it didn't. Okay. And in some cases with this uncertainty regarding the, um, uh, evals in East Green Bush, bills may go up, bills may not change at all, and bills may go down. His property values increased tremendously. So you could go out and you could try to show the community that on average, this five point one nine percent tax levy when compared across the years, these, that we are still lower than many, many other districts and we have a really nice program. We need you to help us a little bit more. And, and I think that that could get a sixty percent vote. I can't guarantee that. There'll be people that will vote against the budget no matter what you do. But if it fails, meaning you don't get sixty percent, you go back and you revise the budget and you bring it under the cap and you do what you have to do. But you got two chances.
Do we, yeah, I, I'm sorry. Do we have any figures from the seventeen, eighteen, eighteen to nineteen, nineteen to twenty? I mean, those are when it was highest to the
Those are on the website. I have, I have to look at them.
Yeah. What percentage of it did it pass then?
Uh, I have to look. I don't know. We've always passed, even, even when there were large, more significant cuts than what we proposed here in two thousand and ten is it passed by in the fifty percent. So we've, we've been able to pass budgets in the sixties and seventies and eighty percents in the last few years. I think with the right explanation, that's guaranteed that this board and the district has demonstrated regarding the budget. I, I, you know, somebody could call, tell me tomorrow and say I'm out of my mind. But I think it's worth a shot.
I agree with Mike, you know, we definitely need a backup plan. Um, and I, I like that perspective, Jeff, but I also wonder because we've had such low increases, if any at all, like you were saying, um, in comparison to the past three years, for some people, it's going to be really sticker shock, you know, like you were saying. And so it, it could go one of two ways. I think people could say, yeah, we kind of, you know, skated the past three years. We didn't have big increases. Um, or people could say, well, I was really used to the lack of increase. So, um, I don't know. Talking about this, can you go back to slide fifteen? I think that that was a good slide. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I just, I just want to say, um, I want, I want to add quickly specifically to this. Um, and I want to say there's just no really great way, right, to present, you know, potentially raising taxes, right? Cuts, um, you know, or, or, or any, and, and I think, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. And I really respect, you know, um, you presenting this information to us, right? The challenge it is, um, to present, you know, hard to swallow information, right? Um, and I, I just, I just want to make the point to say as a district, right, as a board, as a superintendent, you know, the truth is we have had a lot of positive, um, people focused practices. You know, we've been growing our employment numbers. You know, we've been expanding our programs, adding classes, adding extracurriculars. There's been a lot of positives over the years, um, and, and, and now, um, we're having to consider um, our approach moving forward. But I, I just want to highlight that we have had a people centered perspective, um, historically. Um, you know, um, with, with that said, um, you know, looking at the budget picture, um, thinking about potential cuts, um, one, one thing I want to say about a concern I have about rollover budgets in general. And, and, and I only say this to say, um, I really like the tempered approach. And, and, and the reason why is because if by chance, um, we have any assumption that might not be exacting accurate, similar to the impact of revenue and expenses, how they compound over the years as we get further out, also the effect of assumptions that creates an error aggravates over the years. So I just want to say that if we look at the immediate year, right, a two point two, like, 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 if we look at the increase in the immediate year, it don't look, um, as dire as, 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 as perhaps we could perceive, you know, um, um, the picture. So I just kind of want to, want to, want to just temper at least a bit for that, for, for that reason. Um, and, and, and maybe we, so, so even thinking about the long range, you know, trying to balance, looking at the long range versus looking at the short range, um, related to the, to the tax increases. So, so getting back to, to these percentage increases, which would be able to go, Mr. Simons, to, to slide sixteen. So what, what I noticed here is, so looking all the way back to twenty twenty to twenty twenty five, um, if we actually, uh, increased five percent, that would only add a one to our average number, which would still have us the lowest effective increase across the years. So even at a higher increase, so, so if we put, so we would have to go all the way to a ten or eleven for an effective increase to be competing with the highest taxes. And, and, and the reason why I, I, I'm bringing up that perspective is because when thinking about raising taxes, it's not just about the coming year, but subsequent years. So I'm just thinking about, do it put us in position to be able to be in a stronger financial position that we can temper better and, and better impact the taxpayer, not just next year, right, but over the long run, right? Cause yeah.
You say compounding effect, you're absolutely correct. It goes to the recurring revenue, raise the tax levy by five percent next year. You're yielding an additional one point.
Just under one point two million is the two percent.
That's just not one shot money. That money goes on to the base of the tax levy. And then whatever you do in the following year, it's recurring revenue. So whereas uh, the eight million dollars appropriated, you hope not to spend it, but once you spend it, it's gone. So it does, it does have a compounding effect. And it to some degree uh, com- helps get us through the adjustments that are necessary to bring our average tax levy increases more aligned with comparable districts. One of the things I would say now and to the public is this gap that we're trying to fill isn't associated with a spending problem. It's the revenue problem. And we have not enough revenue A to fund the increases that we're looking at in employee benefits this year, which we're not in your control or mine. Right? And secondly, to start on a more, um, balanced trajectory in terms of always looking at spending, bringing your spending down. But also, as I pointed out in the past, we're not going to get state aid to climb out of this hole. We're an average wealth district and the state expects us to to offset what they give us with taxing this. Because we're an average wealth district. The formula is built that way. So we're not going to get you know, enough revenue from the state to keep taxes at this level. The compounding effect is a good point because it's going to get us back on the average of some of these other districts. We saw that our spending for people is in line with them. In fact, in some cases it's lower.
I, I just want to say, um, you know, my position is, and I understand sticker shock, um, I, I, I would, I would support um, an, an increase for this year with the idea, um, you know, of, um, focusing on costs moving forward and ensuring that, you know, because I do like the history of having an average low tax rate. You know, and, and, and if we don't get ahead of it, it's possible we could get behind and have no choice. And that's the situation I don't like.
In there now.
Yeah.
It could get worse.
So, 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 so I, I, I could support an increase at, and this is just my position, obviously, right? The board would have to, you know, and, and the perspective that I'm looking at it is what is the effective tax rate looking forward, right? We see what the last five years looked like. It's been historically low. In order to keep it historically low, we have to be in control of our finances completely to be able to control where we are. So, so if, even if we're looking at a one point five over the coming five years, the way to do that is to be in a position where we don't, where we're not making decisions that we have to. We're in control. We're pointing the ship where we want to. The revenues is coming in, compounding, and we're controlling costs looking forward. And, and from that perspective, I, I could support a higher increase, right? We, we don't like cuts. We want to support our kids. We want to support the taxpayers too. And I just, I just rather do that from a position looking forward, trying to take control this year than hoping for next year.
If we did the two percent over the tax cap, point four, so be for twenty five, twenty six. And you were to put this chart up there next year, how does that, that zero point that, that fifty one first point five five one, what would that look like next year? What would that number be?
Yeah. So it's, it's one and a quarter looking at. So we add a fifth year, just going back five years. It's a one and a quarter. So it depends. That other chart included twenty twenty one with that one and a half percent levy increase. This is just having a five year average. It's kind of a good benchmark to look at. With the tax levy increase of five point one nine percent, that would be an average tax levy of one point two five percent per year over this five year period of twenty one, twenty two.
Go back to that chart again. So next year, if we were to see this chart, it would say one point two five.
It would be one point two five. We take off twenty twenty one and put in the new twenty five, twenty six.
Everybody else is though.
We don't know what the other ones are yet. We don't know.
No.
Yes. For us, it would be one point two five percent, the new five year average.
And, and I, right. And like Jesse says, that still puts us way under the average of all the other districts.
I, I have a couple specific questions. I don't know if I'll get to them, but the I think we need to work forward. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that the, the five point nine is great, but we're going to come and have another problem next year. And we're going to have another problem following you. So I, I would ask, and I know working in the cabinet, have a little bit longer range budget process that we could eyeball and say, all right, we're, we're doing, I, you know, we're doing the right thing. Well, we know we still have time. I think we have to be honest with the problem.
I agree with that. We can work on something that's more of a framework, but it won't, it won't have, you know, a level of certainty associated with it. Okay. Because expenses are, are, you know, this whole health insurance thing, as you saw this year. But we can make some assumptions. We'll share with you what those assumptions are. And I think we could show you at least a model of increased tax levy for the next few years, X number of cuts and expenditures, ju- adjustments to reserves. We can show you something. It won't, it won't be, uh, it won't be spot on, but it'll give you, more different than these budget scenarios. And it gave you kind of the framework to consider. You think you could do that?
And I know that's not an easy task. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know how difficult it is actually because I've already gone out to twenty seven, twenty eight. The assumptions I've used to get to twenty seven, twenty eight, I don't have information that would change the assumptions leading into twenty eight, twenty nine. And so it's basically just pulling that out.
Yeah, that'd be great. But give it to us in the chart so we can.
Yes, I, yep, I have a spreadsheet. You can see the details. You can see the assumptions. This is very summary level. Actually, Mr. Simons and I were reviewing that just earlier this week.
So can I guess? And we don't have to address these because they're not, you know.
Or a second.
Well, well, I know, but can I just, um, the kindergarten class size concerns me a little bit. So I don't know if we can talk about that. I'll just listen and then we can talk about where. Could we get the middle school and the high school class average for now? You know, like you have the elementary one.
Oh, you're talking about for twenty four, twenty five?
Yeah. Well, this is only for twenty five. I would see.
You'd like to see history.
And the summer, the, the, the elevation rate, is that what it is? That's not summer school, correct? And so I think we just need to clarify, do we still have a summer school?
So we would have our E S Y summer program, which is I E P driven. Um, but the K A elevate program, which would, would be your more, I guess, traditional summer school. So we would not have that.
Okay. And then two more. One is, uh, at the head of this, we have to work on controlling health insurance a- as a nation, but in every.
You have a resolution on the agenda tonight, and I want to thank the bargaining groups, the teachers association is here, the United Teachers Association is here. I think there are some S and P members here too. Every district in Kachik, which is their health insurance consortium. Every district in Kachik, which is their health insurance consortium. Read to have their bargaining groups. Uh, pose an M O, an M O A, which puts on some future costs. Hopefully. Bar rails on prescription drugs, three different types of prescription drugs. That have been. You, the utilization of those drugs. By a small number of. Employees in all of our districts. Is, is a large portion of the cost increase, so this puts some. Preauthorization requirements on it and also use of. Mechanism to shop for the lowest prices and prescriptions.
On specialties, free market health.
Free market health. Uh, so. That prospectively will do some things to slow the growth. But the consortium is talking about. Doing some other things in terms of looking at. Plans and other things, I, I think it's important to keep in mind. That this cost escalation was not associated with the benefit that you. Put into the contract, but however, some of these. Some of these, uh, cost controls. Aren't available right now because of contractual requirements.
And if there are programs that, that's probably what you're looking to help to make sure that it's a. Feeling it essential, all of the components of that person's. You know, that area, so are you doing this, are you doing that, are you doing this, yeah, you can get the drug. Uh, and that's really a thought process, we will make sure that you get the people that are dedicated to it.
We have a health insurance committee that all of our bargaining is participating in, I think our bargaining unit, our employees, our leaders are very. Conscientious about. Understanding what is driving some of this and they're, they're willing to work with us and. Try to figure out ways to achieve cost savings, especially in health insurance, but. Uh, we're, we've had some meetings last week, we have some meetings coming up. Uh, in a couple of days, we're, we're gonna continue to talk about what we can do together. To control some of these costs in particular with health insurance.
I don't know. Um, and I made a mistake, boots on the ground, how many people are we here that we're gonna, boots on the ground, didn't retire. That we're gonna. Make sure I understood that, cuz there's a lot of numbers, but a lot of them are from.
I believe it will be two or three.
The net was pretty low.
Yeah, the net layoffs are, are pretty low and, um. Again, I got retirement, I got a retirement today in a non-instructional area. We may get others and. At the end of the process, we hope to shift people into positions that become available, we don't know that yet, but. Other than teachers. Who wanna be eligible for the retirement instead of people have till the end of the year to tell us if they wanna retire, so. That could factor into it as well. So we're trying to avoid. Really any layoffs, but I can't guarantee that that won't happen right now.
Mr. Simons, can I just comment quickly on the kindergarten class sizes, just to give you a little information, so that. Projection of nineteen point two students is assuming that. Um, all families or students that receive registration packets do register. Uh, I look back this current school year, we had thirty less kindergarteners registered than received packets. Um, the year before that, we also had less, I don't have the exact number, so. Naturally, the number could just naturally go down if we have less, um, students register, and then also there. Um, you know, these assumptions on projections for class sizes. Um, you know, if we feel that kindergarten still is higher than we'd like, we could make a change there and, you know. Shuffle teachers around and maybe our fifth grade numbers go up a little bit for the kindergarten to go down. Um, but I haven't had. Direct conversations with principals regarding the needs of, of their students, so these are more projections.
Final count for kindergarten, I know it's not really until summer, but when's it really pretty solid?
Um, I would say it's pretty solid. By the end of the school year, definitely, there are some that come over the summer, but it's, it is always fluctuating.
I think if you get back to your eighteen, then you're, you're going back to.
Exactly.
You know, that drop that we saw.
And if you do thirty, you should be able to get back to your.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One thing that we have done in the past to control class sizes. Those members of the board that have been here for a while will know this, was actually rather routine, can we get this? We have attendance zones in our contingent, for example, belltops attendance zones contingent with Janay's with rednecks. Okay, once we look at the numbers, you can cap the numbers, so let's say that the numbers were getting high in kindergarten and add. Redmail. And we didn't wanna add another class, but the numbers were low at Beltop. Or vice versa, done this in the past, we. You capped it and said, well, there's no more room. At Redmail, however, we have room at Beltop. We do make adjustments to the transportation to send these kids there. And we say, if, you know, next year you'd have the option. Go back to your home school attendant, and typically they don't. Cuz they like it, so I remember years ago, we had a lot of kids. That Redmail that were, uh, registered late, uh, that should have gone to Belltop, I think it was. They went to Redmail for the year and they were at Redmail first grade and all the way up in the fifth grade because they like it there, so. You can manage your attendance zones in that way so that you don't have the expense of adding a teacher, but you're still keeping the class sizes for them all. By, you know, shifting your attendance zones a little bit and capping the classes.
And you, you, uh, we adapted to the siblings, right, we, we made exceptions to that if there were siblings, yeah.
So, um, can take a look at that. The other thing we have to look at with, uh, certain schools is there are, um. Primary age kindergarten or first graders and second grade and special education classes that are integrated into those. Numbers, so you wanna look at the impact of that, so if you have three or four special education students. That go into that kindergarten class for either half the day or part of the day. You wanna look at the impact on that and you wanna look at the impact when they go to art class and music class, so we look at that as well. Those numbers are not, I'm not sure if they're reflected in those, I don't think they are.
No, that, that would not be reflected.
That's more fluid. In terms of, uh, the special education students.
So they're, they don't, you're not counting them in the class size, they're like an add on, they're part day or?
Um, yeah, so, um. A special education student who receives co-teaching services is included, but you may have a student who is in a specialized class. Um, but there's part of the day where they may receive, you know, E L A. Um, integrated as opposed to what their specialized class, those. Those few students that may come in for part of the day are not included into this number.
That makes sense, my son is in an integrated kindergarten classroom and some folks I know are only there for the morning meetings. And then push out or if there's a different. I can gather from his talking about it, there's different schedules for different folks and it seems like. There's a lot, there's a big classroom, but I can understand why. You know, it's, it's a little larger cuz folks are coming in and out.
I, I have a, I have a quick comment, um. And I don't wanna sound too assertive with this cuz I could be mistaken about. Um, you know, what, what, what I'm saying, um, you know, but, but I'm wondering about the speech position, just if you could look into it. Um, and I'm wondering if at Janay, we had a backlog of speech services there. Potentially, and I'm just wondering if there was any backlog in, in programs or teaching, if we could just ensure that.
I think we're replacing the speech position, are we not?
Yeah, so are you talking currently right now?
We're not cutting the speech position, okay, okay.
Yeah, so currently right now for speech, there is not.
We have a retirement, but we're hiring.
Right, there is not a backlog, um. There was a, a situation with occupational therapy, um, where there was a, a staff member that was out on. On a leave and we were having trouble filling that. We ended up, um, we ended up filling that, um, through a service. And then we were able to hire somebody for the remainder of the year, but what we did was we, we kept the person that we hired through the service. On for the remainder of the year as well to do those compensatory services that students would have missed prior to, you know, that starting, so that.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I'm talking about, thank you.
So Superintendent Simons, um, thank you for this, you answered a lot of my questions from the last session and that. Um, and I did wanna say, I know that the going over the tax cap, um, it can be a little hard to swallow, but. I mean, we're looking, you're proposing doing that with substantive, some substantive cuts to staff, and so. As much as I. All of us would hate to raise, to, to raise the tax levy over the cap. I would say I. I don't even really wanna consider what it would look like to not do that. It, because then we are looking at more of our reserves or more, more cuts. So, you know, I, I just wanna let you know that I, I do, I think scenario two makes a lot of sense. So.
It's hard to swallow though. Um, but it is, it is, it is, in my view. Necessary. You know, I don't wanna see a scenario where you have to cut. You know, I, I don't wanna give an impression that by raising the cat, tax levy above the cap that. You don't have to cut, I'm just being honest about it, you have to be bold.
My only question is, and correct me if I'm mistaken, but like, so we're talking about even if we raise the tax levy. To the five point one nine, we're still doing, say we still do the maximum cuts. We're still looking at a projection of eight million dollars that we have to use from the fund balance, which is not sustainable, so like. Going along with like the future projections, and I know it's probably impossible to do, but. We would continue to have to make cuts, can we look now? At what those projected cuts might be down the road, is there a way to try to? Guesstimate if.
Uh, the best way that you can, but it was not exact, you could look at your enrollment projections over the next. Uh, five years, your enrollment projection study, and you can look at the, uh, number of kids. Out of high school, number of kids moving from middle school to elementary school, what, uh, what the enrollment fluctuations might mean for. Adjusting staff as people retire. You know, you can do, you could, you know, I actually enjoy doing that kinda stuff, so I. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't mind taking, taking a try at it.
I, I do wanna say, like, there, there, there's risk though. There, there, there's a risk in projecting out calculations, right, because there's risk in the calculation. And there's unknowns about the environment, ab- absolutely, um, but, but, but. The, 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 the rea- the reason why I mentioned it is because of the point that. The strength of really focusing like now on, you know. Um, where, what position do the decisions we make now? Create for when we get to the projected years out. And, and, and the only reason why I'm emphasizing that so hard, and, and especially as Mr. Simons is putting together this information. Um, is because he's really trying to get a sense from the board, right, directionally. What is he gonna bring back week after week as we continue to consider the budget? Um, and, and, and the reason why I'm saying that is because the, the more he get a sense for the appetite of how we're gonna approach. He's gonna go back, he's gonna make his revisions to his proposal to see if this is a better fit. Um, and so.
Right now, I'm, I'm assuming. That, uh. My starting point is scenario two. And to try to make some adjustments to that based on concerns about future.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe talk about, you know, ways to approach the tax levy with our community. Can you put the, the scenarios up there?
Yeah.
So scenario two is in the bottom left quadrant. It has a five point one nine percent tax levy, a budget of one fifteen point eight. All revenues of one oh, one oh seven point seven. Uh, deficit of eight million and appropriating fund balance reserves to close that. It includes the two point seven million dollars worth of cuts, the list that we proposed or equivalent. So I'm not saying that the two point seven is gonna stay the same positions. We're still gonna do that review, but as soon as two point seven or greater reductions, there may be ways to have greater reductions.
I, um, I just wanna make a comment that I'm, I feel, um, a little bit uncomfortable with the pre-K, um. In, in the scenario two as, as a proposed cut. I know it's a shift, but, um, it's one of the areas where we have a waitlist and we, you know, have. More families want pre-K than we can offer, and I understand it's a shift, but I think that, um, there's a proposed. Um, uh, house bill to raise the reimbursement of that, um, so I know that. In, in our own buildings, we lose money, and I'm assuming that's for salary purpose because of salaries. Um, and we can break even if it's in the community based, um, and so I, I, I conceptually get that, however. What's the new, what would be the new delta, uh, between if that, if that passes, it's looking. Good, um, so what, what's that delta now with the?
We, we talked about that and we could bring that.
Yeah.
Projection back because that would be, if they go from fifty four hundred hours to eight thousand dollars per kid. But then that would be in general fund savings as well. Whether or not that would offset, whether that would be offset, you know, shifting the programs to, to classes to. Providers, we'd have to take a look at, probably not, but it, you know, it's a balance between people like the programs in our schools.
Yeah, but you're one eighty five, it might not really be.
Might not be the one eighty five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping it's not, um, I, I just, um, that's. I, I don't, I don't really like that one, but, um, other than that too, so that, that one eighty five is that. Um, would we be saying to those teachers that they're no longer needed?
That would be question I would have to do, I have not talked to Moses about this. I wanted to know if you've more thought about it first.
So they are.
They have other U P K sites in other districts, I don't know the status of their teachers and teaching assistants.
But, yeah, they're not our staff.
Not our staff, so those five in the elementary, those K through five in elementary are not included, those pre-K, no. Thank you.
But again, I haven't had those discussions with Quester.
Yeah.
Just wanna see what. I knew that there'd be some.
I think we're gonna, I think, I, I just, I ha- I just don't think that that will go over well. I think that if I'm, if I'm correct, Roy, that people typically want to be in the, in the. Classrooms in our school buildings as first, second, and they'll, they'll drive a little further to do that as opposed to the community base. I'm only thinking of how, how this will be received by the community, um, and having that on the, um, chopping block, so.
I have a couple of comments as well, and just to piggyback on that one first, how does the timing of the budget work with that decision, because. I think you're in lottery process now, parents need to pull out of.
You're gonna have to delay, yeah, it's a great question, we talked about, would we delay the, would we delay the lottery until such time as we have firmed up the sites?
Yeah.
And then do the lottery afterwards, and Roy has already thought of it.
I, I would. I would recommend, um, our lottery is scheduled for April second. Um, which is next week, so if it's still a discussion. I don't, I, I would recommend that we wait until at least after the next Board of Education meeting, um. It still is plenty, it's still plenty of time, we're, the April second, I believe is a week earlier than we did it last year. Um, already, um, and then we have had situations where we've added. Um, when we expanded, we added a pre-K site after I believe we even did the lottery, so. It has been a little not perfect all the time, but I would recommend, um. To hold off on doing the lottery till at least after the next Board of Education.
Um, I think. I think we've all said it, I mean, this, while this is not an expenditure problem, it's the thing we can control. Um, and just, I'm sure this, I'm curious about some of the instances in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four actuals. Where we then have had maybe. Increases in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five and adopted budget and perhaps even further increases in twenty twenty five, twenty. Twenty six, and I assume this has been done, but I just think like in the. In the, with public person, you know, just, this is a tough. Thing for the public to deal with, and I, if there's an opportunity to just comb through this. Over and over again, and, you know, opportunities to really look at costs and if there's things we can do, I'm, you know, I, I trust that it's been done, but like. You know, fresh set of eyes over and over again, I think that would be like, like. We have to look sort of austere across the board in budgeting, right? Um, and I think some of that also is like, are there opportunities for efficiencies within? You know, like shared positions, like especially when we think about like, you know, perhaps clerical roles or that kind of thing, if there's some sort of efficiency and. Um, consolidation that we can think about, you know, in that regard.
Some of the clerical positions are. Well, one, one is vacant, assistant principal's office. One may become vacant at the high school, soon through a resignation, the opportunity for that person. And so we're, to be honest about it, we're looking at that kinda concept of people sharing clerical at the high school.
Yeah.
Because there's, uh, there's more secretaries at the high school. Uh, that where we're able to do that. Not so much at the elementary school where we have people, uh, who are two people. Not so much at the elementary school where we have people uh, who are two people, one is really handling visitor management or other things, and one that's handling the principal's work, so. But the high school and the middle school to some degree, uh, are things that we are looking at. Try to take the same approach with the teachers that as a position is vacated, uh, we have to make a change there and if there's three secretaries in an office, then they have to go down to two, and someone may have to move to another function.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I, I, I like it.
We're looking at for the high school.
I, I like that idea a lot. And, and I really think that if we're even to consider going above the cap, and I, and I say it like that, not to say that we should go above reluctantly, you know, although being conscious of the impact to taxpayers, you know, but, but I say it to say um, that we should make a commitment alongside it, um, to focus on spending, like, like we will not raise taxes and find ways to create savings. Um, and, and, and so, so, so when I say like, cause I really think that looking at that effective rate across several years, I think we should continue to remain the lowest, but it don't mean every year, you know, to, to, you know, to, to not, you know, we've got to.
And I totally recognize that some of these are really small, but I think it's about the perception and the, you know, if you're, we're asking the public to do something, you know, or get on board with something.
So we still have a list of things that we are looking at. Some of them were mentioned, like in terms of consolidating our programs uh, in out debt. Okay, we want to keep out debt services because they're great, but there's kind of an overlap there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in terms of uh, the number of full-time equivalents that are dedicated to those programs, and one of them is fifty-nine thousand dollars per kid. So we want to perhaps look at a different model and phase out some things and do them differently. Clerical positions is another one. Uh, I mentioned Peters, uh, gonna go without a position, but somebody else in the central office is gonna have to help him and take on some duties to be able to support that office. Uh, there is a clerical person in the counseling office at the high school who will be leaving us, and there are two there, we're gonna have to go down to one. And somebody from one of the offices will have to help out when there's an overflow in that office, and those are the kinds of things that we are, are gonna have to do. Other things we're looking at is overtime. Um, I personally looked at the overtime and you know, in some cases that overtime is being utilized because we don't have sufficient subs, particularly in the custodial uh, rates. So we may bring to you at some future time an adjustment to custodial substitute rates that would be cheaper than paying somebody time and a half or uh, or uh, a higher rate. We added some uh, safety supervisors who are terrific. They do a great job, but their hours are a scheduled basis, but they also are helping us with events. We're not gonna eliminate that, but we have to look at, how can we control that a little bit better? And maybe there are things that we can do to uh, manage that better and set some parameters to it. The other one is uh, we are a little, this is something that may make the community nervous, but it shouldn't. Uh, when we open up a building on a Saturday or a Sunday for community groups, we do that because we are a community-centered district, and so when groups come in to use our facilities, we want to have them to use them, use them. Uh, in some cases, we charge them. We're not sure whether what we're charging them is what was actually costing us. We have to bring a custodian to do that, particularly on a Sunday, they're getting time and a half. So we're looking at that too. We want to keep that relationship with the community. We want to open up our facilities to the community, but we might not be covering our costs, and we have to look at that. Just started those conversations. Shift changes in custodians whereby you maybe don't need two people at night, maybe have somebody come in in the afternoon and cover uh, through the night. So looking at those kinds, we're looking at all those kinds of things.
I, I, I'd argue just in that case also, like utility usage, like, you know, per, 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 per rata for the, for the period, not to get to, but you know, just.
We have a, we have a consortium that, what's our, you know what our obligation off the top of your head is for the management? We have a consortium like we do for health insurance, for uh, uh, natural gas and electricity through OCMOSIS, for hundreds of school districts and municipalities. They, you lock into a, a bid for a period of time, then when that expires, we can look at that.
Well, you know, I was thinking Jesse means charging back to these community-based places, which I wouldn't want to do.
No, no, like what I'm saying is it's like, so it's, it's like when you rent any venue, right? If you use the space of a venue, yeah, there, there, there's utilities, so if you pay.
If we charge back how much it actually costs, this, the communities won't be able to afford it.
We generally charge for, if they need technology, we generally charge for if they need. Obviously, it's required to have a custodian there. And I don't remember exactly what else we charge for, but we have a policy that we're gonna take a look at, maybe the policy committee can do that, but we don't have enough data to know.
Yep.
You know, what the costs are associated. We, we do know that we're very, uh, sometimes you get complaints that community groups, we can't get gems. They usually can't get the gems because another group is using, you know, or our own programs are using it. So maybe scheduling that differently, maybe looking at that differently in what it costs. So that's something.
And a lot of groups, they don't charge at all, like.
Right. At a time, I remember when uh, Strattan was here, there was a, a policy that we didn't open the buildings on Sundays or on vacations or holidays uh, for outside groups. I'm not saying we're gonna go that far, but we want to take a look at it. And I, I have to say that the custodial union, the teachers' union, the SRP union, we opened up lines of communication. And in some cases, they're giving us ideas about how to save money and, and they're helpful. When does all of the retirement requests have to be in place?
Well, it depends on what unit they're in. So, and it also depends if whether they're willing to give up the incentive or not. So that is built into the contract language so that budgeting has time to plan for those incentives. So.
Still within that timeframe where we could possibly see more come.
Yes.
There are some teachers that are not eligible for the incentive that are, we're assuming are gonna retire in our calculations, and we're, we're gonna talk to the teachers union a little bit more about. You know, whether or not, you know, a couple of years ago, we looked at the incentive and we made it, we, we suspended the window. And maybe we'll make some other adjustments. We don't, we don't know whether or not that would lead to any more retirements in the teachers.
Right. Not saying to do away with programs or reduction in staff, but if you hire a new person at a lower rate, you know, it has savings.
The two replacements, two or three replacements that we're doing that are in this budget, we're, we're replacing the speech and we're replacing
Science.
the science.
Yeah.
There is a breakage of about twenty-four thousand dollars in savings for each. Is that right, Jen?
Yes, it's about twelve thousand a position. That's because there's retiree health insurance that's added back.
Is there a retirement incentive for other units? Have we thought about that before or not really?
It's come up before, um, when you have to replace the person, generally don't get the same level of savings as you would for an administrator or a teacher. So.
And you're losing out on the experience.
Right.
Jen, I have one other question for you, just actually with this chart, the page nineteen versus the numbers we're looking at on page twenty-one. I'm not following the fund balance and reserve numbers of the EBLR three.
Yep. So I can, um, so, so basically, this is our spending plan, the hundred and fifteen point eight million dollars. And revenue that we're estimating will come in is a hundred and seven. So the difference between that, you need to have a plan to fund the remaining expenditures. So when we flip back over to the other slide, do you know what slide number that is?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. That eight million dollars, we're not necessarily going to spend at all. Not yet.
Michelle, you asked this question.
Yeah, and the connection, so, so basically, we're planning on spending about four point seven million dollars of that eight million next year. And that is because there's some conservatism on the revenues and you, you can't spend your complete budget because you have to have some contingencies. So now the connection between the EBLR reserve, the um, ERS reserve and the TRS reserve, um, the EBLR reserve is at three hundred thousand as part of the budget. The ERS and TRS reserves are each one point seven million dollars. So oh, no, yep, right. So those are, that's the detailed breakdown of the eight thousand seventy-one. So now if we go back to slide twenty-one. On the EBLR line, it says that we're only using a hundred and fifty-six thousand. That's because of interest earnings. So, and then the same idea on ERS. So one point seven million less, the one five eight two is interest earnings, estimated interest earnings. Um, and the same with the TRS. Um, so that's what those differences are, differences are between those numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan. All right. So, moving on to the public forum, we appreciate the community bearing with us, and thank you, Mr. Simons, Ms. Mulligan for, for all that information.
Can I just recap real quick? So I think the general consensus is that, that bottom left one we're starting with. But we're going to project a few years out, and we're also going to have a Plan B. Um, so we understand if the, going to that five point one nine, um, what would we have to look at, right?
Right.
Okay.
And Emily, can I just add, and I'm assuming we're still potentially trying to narrow down that more. We're not just gonna be like, this is it, right? And we're still digging a little bit. I'm not thinking we're gonna find anything, but you know.
Well, yeah, I think so, because we talked about the pre-K.
Right, right. So it's, it's not over yet, but.
We're gonna, we're gonna continue to look at.
Look under every rock.
We have to look at enrollment. Have to look at certainty as to whether or not we can reduce positions in those areas. So there'll be, there'll be some changes in the expenditure estimates, there'll be some changes likely in the revenue estimates and we'll give you some what if, what if we don't get the, what if we get the higher higher uh, PPK for student, what does that look like in terms of impact on the general fund doing what we're doing right now? Uh, so there'll be some, it won't match exactly what's in that.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Just still looking into it. Perfect. All right. So, so moving on. So, Ms. Steinbach, are you, are you all set?
Yeah, that was, yeah, I just.
Per- perfect. Uh, so, so moving on to public forum, residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations of the district. Other than matters involving personnel, members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during a public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or the superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting, which should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Any comments?
My name is Caleb Smith. I have a student center in elementary. My address is six Highland Drive, East Green Bush. Um, I had a couple of comments regarding everything. Um, the first would be my, as a, as a taxpayer, my first thing looking at it would be, I wish we had raised taxes one percent over the past four years and maybe not needed to raise it by five percent in a big jump. Um, that's just my personal opinion as to how I would have rather have seen it go. Um, I kind of thought that over the past couple of years, although I was gonna come to a board meeting and say, raise my taxes more. Um, but I think it looks a little bit better when it comes across a little bit each year. Um, so going forward, I know we can't change the past. Going forward, that would be my personal opinion. Um, in addition, I have a couple of kids that are, I have a kid going into golf. I have a kid that'll be at Janay next year, and I have a kid that'll be going hopefully to the UPK. Um, one of my comments with the UPK is that Questar is obviously significantly more expensive than the outsourced UPK program. So I can understand why you're looking at shifting it. My question would be, is there a way to maybe utilize other programs to service the in-district um, UPK program? So for example, if Holy Spirit does it for fifty-four hundred and they break even with what you're getting, they're also providing the location and et cetera. Could they be the one providing the services in district versus using Questar that's double the cost? Um, and then that way you could potentially keep the programs in district and keep the cost down to what the state is paying. Um, I feel like if Holy Spirit can do it for fifty-four hundred and provide the location, if we're providing the location, is there maybe a cheaper option? Um, again, I don't know how your contracts work and if that's something that you could do, but that's just from an outside perspective. Um, and then in terms of the elementary cuts with the five positions, um, my concern is when you look at class averages, you're combining all five elementary schools and just averaging all the class sizes. Um, I think sometimes that can be a little distorted when you're looking at two of the bigger schools versus three of the smaller schools. Um, and my concern would be that I hope we're not just going to say one elementary teacher at each school, because I think that would affect class sizes very, very differently. Um, and not that you said that you were going to do that, but I just want to make sure that that's something that I think a lot of elementary parents are gonna feel strongly about.
Hello, good evening. So my name is Tiana Pettinger. My address is thirty-three Huntswood Lane, East Green Bush, and I also am here in my capacity as a board member of the East Green Bush Friends of Music as well. Um, you wore out most of your, most of your audience tonight, so I want to make sure I say a couple of words. Um, I do like the notion that has been talked about tonight of kind of starting high in terms of the tax increase with the chance to come back lower if necessary, and that really would be the scenario that would give voters a choice and a voice in the process rather than coming in low and you can't ever vote a budget down and then go higher, right? It doesn't work that way. Um, in terms of uh, the music department in the district, um, due to retirements, we are losing two really bright stars. Um, absolutely incredible people and educators, and really there's gonna have and just because of that, there's going to be an impact across the department and across the students um, in those programs. And on top of that, cutting a position will be extra impact for both the other um, educators in that program as well as the students. Um, and also I'm hearing tonight that that would create a new baseline for staffing. Um, and that would probably continue indefinitely. Um, it feels a little like um, would there be a database reason to eliminate a position in that department if it were not for the two retirements? The two retirements seems like a really low hanging fruit option. And so just hoping you can consider, um, you know, issues of equity um, across areas of education and not just um, out of convenience. No one wants to have to lay off anyone. Um, I, and I totally understand that, but we can't keep making decisions based on who retires because then we're gonna have a lopsided educational system. Um, and I'll just add on a, on a personal note, both of my children uh, participate in the music program, one in band and one in orchestra. And for one of my children, it is the reason why she gets up in the morning and is willing to go to school. And it's the reason why she wants to go to college. And it is, um, life-changing for uh, for many kids, so please keep that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is on, I, I did want to respond to your, your comments, Mrs. Penjer. Okay, um, because you made a good point about, well, first I want to say Mr. Holiday and Ms. Sherzan are terrific. And they're uh, Their retirement is a big loss to the school district. The plan would be to make sure that we have the exceptional band teacher there and exceptional strings teacher there. In terms of looking at data, uh, we've been meeting as a group of administrators. Mr. Halliday noticed today, who was also our department chair, that we're going to. Uh, move up the deadline by which we actually go out and figure out how many students. Fourth grade, for example, want to take instruments next year. How many kids maybe in middle school want to take an instrument? So we're going to gather that information, send that out earlier. To inform our decision as to whether or not the music reduction would fall at the elementary school level and what that would look like. So we are gathering that information. We're speeding up the process earlier than we used to do. We, we believe based on the collaboration among the, the schools that. You know. Can do it at the elementary school level with one fewer. Uh, person total in the district, how that schedule is distributed across, you know, all of the buildings, we still have to take a look at. We did add music positions a couple of years ago because of the strings, students at the elementary school level who wanted to take strings. And we needed that. It also becomes a matter of having, how does it work across the schools in terms of? Number of classes uh, that need to be taught, general music, the number of kids that takes certain instruments, the lesson size groups and all of that. So we're going to be doing that. Before we make a final decision.
Good evening. My name is Justin Maroney. I live at seventeen Crisscrossing in East Green Bush. Um, I'm technically here in official capacity as president of the Friends of Music, but Tiana presented everything that, you know, needed to be presented. So I'm not badgering you with that too. Um, I'm a very simple man when it comes to money. So when large numbers are thrown out, I, they just sort of, my eyes just glaze over. Um, this is more of a suggestion going forward for simple things like myself. When I see, especially on slide twenty one, all the different numbers. I don't know where those numbers come from. I mean, I have an idea of, you know, where, what the available funds are, et cetera. But as far as what the deductions are for the different line times for the EBLR, the ERS, the TRS, I'm not sure how those relate to. Where the money is are coming from as well. I don't know what revenues typically come into the school where those are generated from, you know, all the different sources that come into that. Um, but one other point too, uh, I believe the gentlewoman in the corner there, when she was pointing out the different things. It was really difficult to understand where she was pointing to. So I don't know, maybe a laser pointer might be. A more efficient thing for that. Um, and one other just simple comment too, I think, I don't. Want this to come up as being snarky. This is my first, you know, education meeting I'm attending. Um, I don't know if microphones are typically used during the board meetings, but it's very difficult to hear when you're not speaking into them. So a lot of the conversations were missed. Um, I was able to hear a lot of what you said in the corner there. Thank you. But a lot of the questions she was posed. Were kind of lost at that point. So thank you for your time.
Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving on to discussion items to current five year staff and overview, hopefully we could keep this concise considering we've talked about staffing a little bit.
I referenced it. I just encourage people to take a look at it.
Excellent.
It was something I would recommend it be updated every year.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Um, moving on to regular business, uh, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? None. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Van Orton, a second. Ms. Turner, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. And this, this is a sad announcement, a resignation of a board member, Mark Mann and, and Mark, which. All right, all right. Is there a motion to approve Mark's review note? I'm sorry, I'm sorry for putting you on the spot there. Motion passes. Um, thank you, thank you so much, uh, for your service, Mark. How, how long has it been that you're on the board?
Well, seventeen years.
Seventeen years and public service as, as a board member, as, as a SR role, I don't want to, you know, but, but no, it's, it's, it's very, um. You know, um, it's, it's, it's admirable. You know, I look up to, you know, your, your role model and, um, and, 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 and providing, you know. How to perform as a board member and balance of perspectives. I don't want to put my foot in my mouth by too much. So I'll just leave it there. But, but thank, thank, it was just really, you know.
Thank you. Um, I'm all in it till June thirtieth, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are you the longest running member ever? With not with kindness, I mean.
I don't, was Joanne?
I don't know. I don't think Joanne was.
At the last meeting, can we get a, can we get the first official photo we have of Mark at his first? We'll see what those seventeen years.
Guarantee you my hair was a different color.
Be very interesting, right? And I was thinking about this lately as we're doing the superintendent interviews as well. Um, you know, being away, right? Um, multiple days a week from home every night after work, you know? Um, the countless hours, right, that you've put in, you know? Because you want to be here and because you feel called to be here. I think, as Jesse says, really admirable. But I'm sure the most impressive thing would be to add up all that time. Um. Yeah.
You know.
I appreciate it. And I have totally enjoyed. Um, all the years that we had some speed bumps, we got over them. Um, but it's truly been uh, enjoyable for me. Uh, my life is changing right now. And, you know, it's taking me in a different direction and I don't want to um, not be able to attend meetings or, or, you know. So.
Yeah.
That, you know, my decision is based solely on, um, I want to make sure that somebody could sit in a seat that can feed here because right now it's. It's uh, becoming a struggle uh, with things that I have going on. So, um, I've totally enjoyed it and. Uh, I will miss it. Um, I'm going to stay on Questar's board for.
So you can look out for us as the district from the Questar perspective. Yes.
And I'll stay on Questar's board here. But no, I truly thank everybody and, and, you know. When you put up that slide of that bottom line with all the other districts, that just goes to show what a good district we are. And, you know, the, what we offer our students, we offer our students more than, you know, a lot of other districts do. And, you know, I'm glad to have been a part of that and, uh, you know, only see our district, you know, uh, going from great to greatness. So. Um, you know, Jeff leaving us in his retirement, bringing on a new superintendent, you know, so really I think our district is in a good spot. And uh, it's only going to get better. This is one of those speed bumps, this budget season. We, we've had them in the past. We've gotten over them and we still continue to be the, the leading district. And uh, you just, that's, you know, we heard it over the last several days, how wonderful our school district is and so. But thank you, thank you, everybody. And uh, I guess I'm here till June thirtieth, so.
I just, I just wanted to add, um, thank you, Mark, and um, I think you are a true example of public service. And I think it's so hard in this climate to encourage people to get into public service for various reasons. So I hope others will see you as an example and choose to get involved.
Thank you.
And I can say, Mark, that you really are a legacy here in terms of what you've been through. I mean, just from starting as, um, the school resource officer. To the police, you know, with the police, the military, you've really shown what it is to be truly dedicated to the community. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we did vote on, we definitely voted on that. Um, so moving on to notice of public hearing. A resolution to approve the notice of public hearing. Is there any questions or comments on this? Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Steinbach, a second. Ms. Kamerski, all in favor? Everyone in favor, motion passes. Moving on to the free market health memorandum of agreement and memorandum of understanding. Is there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Buno, a second. Ms. Phillips, all in favor? Everyone in favor, motion passes. Uh, moving on to the twenty twenty four, twenty five student award scholarships. Any questions or comments? A motion to approve. Ms. Turner, um, a second. Ms. Van Orton, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. Um, are there any table motions? None? See here, moving on to old business. Any old business anyone would like to bring up?
Yeah, I have one thing. I wanted to mention that we had our ex official student board member committee meeting. Sam was there, he was there. I want to thank Mike Harkin, who was here, for putting together a process. We had a good discussion, some good ideas, some feedback. The uh, Mr. Harkin put together a nice process for informing kids, timetables, all that good stuff. There's going to be some feedback and then we'll, we'll start the process and I think maybe a, a quick conversation on the board would be helpful and then we can now. Show everybody how, how we're doing with that. I think it's going to be a really exciting project and looking forward to having a student perspective on the board.
Did we say it would actually be probably two, just in terms of alternating?
Yeah, we have all the details. It'll be a primary and alternate and how they apply and information sessions, communications. It's all covered by the document.
Um, I, I understand this is a really busy time of year, um, but we did, um, and I, I mentioned this before, we did establish ad hoc committees. And um, I think we, we owe an update and reassemble some to, to present the finished product. Um, and then also an update on the engagement survey. Um, I'm not sure where that, that stands. So, um, I know. You know, the, the superintendent search also um, took a lot of our time as well, but hoping we can um, get back to that work. It's, it's needed and. You know, before the, before the year ends.
So I will reach out to the committee members and check availability for dates. We have the new board member, we're in, we're in board member, uh, many. Orientation committee, we have the procedural committee, board operating procedures committee, and I will find out. Um, dates that you guys are available and put those on the calendar for maybe Google meets. And then I did talk to Dr. Kevin McGowan at the DISCUS conference in March. He said that to expect to hear them soon.
Okay.
And I have it, so I'll follow up with it.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And, and then, um, I know we talked about this and I know you're working on this and uh, Mike is, but just a reminder, maybe public. Talk about um, recognition of the graduates that are going into the military or career readiness. And we're going to attempt to put something together for this year.
I did talk to Mike about that. A few weeks ago and um. I told him we wanted it modeled, like last year they did do an award, part of the awards ceremony. Uh, they did include them, but we, we, I said, we wanted it modeled on the athletic.
Yes.
Ceremony that we have for kids that are going on to college to play sports. And he said he'd be glad to do that. He's putting some ideas together.
Great, thank you.
One um, quick reminder, we had said that once the weather gets nicer and it might one of these days, that we would do a meeting at the transportation department. And it might be nice to do that with Mark still with us.
That's a very good idea.
Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Anybody need anything pulled out or set? Um, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Kamerski, is there a second? Ms. Turner, everyone's all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. Um, is there any new business anyone would like to speak of? Our last public forum, any comments? Moving on to the board forum, I'll, I'll start on my left, Ms. Van Orton.
I just want to say thank you for the administration and the work you've done up until this point and the budget workshop combined with orbiting, which is difficult sometimes. Um, given the, the, the breadth of information that is shared with the community as well as the board members and it really kind of. Understanding that. So I just want to thank you for all that work and appreciate it. I know there's a couple more sessions planned typically. And um, it's just imperative that the board members look at this uh, holistically. And see how we can continue to refine what's been put in place and plan for the future and then be cognizant of the impact on the tech schools as well as the kids and families. And it's going to be kind of delicate balancing yet.
All set, thank you. All right. Um, I def- I definitely second Mr. Buno comments. I'm going to thank Mr. Mann again and, and, you know, I, I definitely. Thank you, Mr. Simon, for putting together a budget presentation. I know how hard it is. Not that I thank all the members in the audience for bearing with us through, through this meeting. Ms. Turner. So, right. All right. And let me just confirm, and, and now I need a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Ms. Turner and a second, Ms. O'Brien, everyone in favor? Everyone's in favor, meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.